Open the meeting for the more health and safety on Monday, October 12, 2020. If I can be completely clear, it's rights for the federal regions.
The United States of America and the United States of the United States.
Okay, we'll start the meeting with the Mass Program September 20th. Make it, make it as with such a card.
Yes.
Okay. I would turn the motion to approve this.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I can't hear. Turn your mic on. Put it up there. Nothing, try, hang on.
Yeah, she can't hear it unless you have headphones.
I'll make a motion that we accept the overworks minutes from September 20, 2020.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Megan Sheets.
Aye.
Question passes. Let's go back to just a roll call, sorry, I'm correct that.
Mayor Sheets.
Here.
Greg Miller.
Present.
Megan Sheets.
Present.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Next on the agenda is approval of claims.
I'll make a motion we approve the claims submitted this evening.
Sure.
Roll call please.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Megan Sheets.
Aye.
Question passes. Do we have any public comments? There were none, no public comments, okay. Uh, next on the agenda, we'll go to the department reports. Who's got it? Scott Schumaker.
Can you hear me? All right. I wanted to, we have the good news tonight, the land contract that you all approved. Right about, about a month, I think, that we took it at the city council and so today we received a signed acceptance letter from the Howard County Community Foundation. And so I want to, I want to thank everybody in less than, work on. And so tonight, we'll now set to the city council. And then hopefully, what I'm asking today, I don't know if there's any questions about that or comments before we move on, the next part of that process.
First of all, thank you, Scott, for your work on this, a really exciting project. Second, it's taken us a while, but we got there, and now we're moving forward to the conceit, please.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for helping keeping this on the agenda even with COVID and everything else too. So I announced it to the department today, so everybody, it's, you know, the type of job we talked about is, is back and hopefully in the summer of this year, we're breaking ground. Part of that contract is requiring the hundred thousand dollars to be wired to tie up insurance services incorporated. And we did not have that claim today because it was, it was too late this morning. Our next meeting is about two weeks away, kind of puts us in a deadline, so I'm asking the board works to approve the mayor to allow this hundred thousand dollars to be wired. And then we'll have the claim to formally rectify on the 20th, is that right, 26th? 27th?
Yes.
And that's required, is the good faith to have an law firm to get that wire to the escrow for the owner to lay down to, until February.
So what we need tonight is a motion that would allow Carol, this court treasurer, to go ahead and make that claim now. Probably should do it before the next meeting, because Megan and Greg will pay you for that.
Yes, due within 15 days.
Question to that.
Sure, my motion that we approve, Carol will go ahead and make that wire for the escrow as requested by Chief Unerz.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call please, Carol.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Megan Sheets.
Aye.
Question passes.
Okay, the department report next week, each year, we have the annual, the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy's, basically police department has been a satellite training facility. And this year, we're, they're coming back next year. With COVID-19, we're going to do, you know, we have our conference room, we've also booked, and we're near the library, half the class will come here at various points that week. We're going to keep people out of the police department, we'll be wearing masks, and we'll be plenty of the building each night, that conference room, restaurants and whatnot. But this is, the academy's asked to come back, it's been a great class, the money that comes in that we use for various equipment purposes and whatnot, and also provide, I believe the academy gets half of the registration. And so that'll be next week, we work with library department and whatnot, so hopefully this is, you know, one more year of this, and then maybe a couple of years, we'll have a nice new facility to invite everybody to. Um, we're finally receiving all of our cars that were purchased last year, working before them, and our outfitter finally had all those there. Not saving any problems, cars that we've had to take to the dealership, and several of them have been repaired already, and I think that maybe that's the fastest, they're pushing that fast off the line, you know, I don't know, but we got all that, we're full staff, you know, we've got masks and training, Jordan Cooper will be back, she is back as of last week, but she'll be officially back on the road from her military year. So I think we should put that on your record, her year of service to, to the Indiana National Guard and the United States Military on active duty over in Kuwait.
Absolutely. And we thank Jordan for her service to the country, and God that she made it back and made it back safely.
Yeah, that's true.
And we want to have her back at the department.
And I brought her in with the mayor, I think it's two weeks ago, she's going excitedly back and, and back in Frankfurt and getting back to work, and so that's good for the department, and we're training her for a couple of weeks, get her back and made it with the partner, and then she'll be back on patrol. So, any other questions?
The repairs on the, the, what was that, what was that, something we've already scheduled to go?
Yeah, I wanted to, let you talk to that, like, it was actually, it's a 2015, I think I told you 16 or 17, but it was, it's a 2015 for, for the transmission, exactly, slipping and, and repair was forty-three hundred dollars, and I, three thousand of that will be paid for the issues that we've had on the other cars, so hopefully we get that rebuilt and it's, you know, a good car for two or three years.
So, hopefully you'll take it for the long term, it's, yeah, it's a good car, check three years. So, hopefully you'll take it for the long term.
It's against me.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks for the good news. I'm excited. Good news, I like it, thank you. Next on our agenda is the fire department, John Herbie.
So it looks like I have a lot on the agenda, but I, yeah, I guess just a quick, uh, name and a couple of things. One thing I, I need to, thing I need to get ratified back, and I noticed it a long time, Mayor. I, I can't even talk to you about the phone controller system not working on engine three and working for six plus months. But as you guys could see on the quote that I gave you, that quote was back in June, that's how long it made order to, had ordered it, that's how long it took for me to get this in. So, anyway, I'd like to get this ratified, and hopefully with the search, we can get our phone back from the track on engine, hopefully with the search, we can get our phone. If we're going to do that, I would recommend that we take this out of fire, give it, uh, equipment account, have six thousand one hundred thirty eighteen dollars in that account.
Did you say it cost to that?
Oh, sorry, the, yeah, the control was three thousand. Oh, I'm sorry.
And there was plenty of need in the fire products, but that might be a big issue.
That might be a big. A motion that we accept the cost of the first approach, three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars, you mean, since it's reported, but cheaper.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call please, Carol.
Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Megan Sheets.
Aye.
Question passes.
Okay, real quick, last week was fire prevention, we, we walked over the knife, and we were able to get into the school last Friday. Like their radio and TV class, school was out, high school was on, need learning, but they went ahead and videoed, there was me, Lieutenant Freeman, Lieutenant Weaver, EMS captain, Russell Sheets, the firefighter, Anderson Serre, they, we did a little kind of convocation in front of the camera, it was a lot different than having a bunch of kids out there, so we got to do some takes, and I only had to take five before I got wind down, but anyways, they're working on, on that, and they should have us that video here in the next couple of days, when they're going to email to me, when I get an email, I'll email it to you guys, but they're going to play this, I guess they just, every classroom has some kind of screen, they can just push play in like at nine AM on, say Wednesday, every classroom in the grade school, that video will be on there. So for them to watch, and it's about a five or 10 minute fire prevention talk, so at least we can kind of get out, out here, drop the message out a little bit, have some fun doing it, making fun of each other, so.
Yeah, so I want to think the schools were cooperating with the city, making sure that, that student, that student, that.
Yeah, it was fun, actually. Then I got an invitation for the Lafayette Fire Academy, and I just wanted to send this invitation to the Maryland Board of Works, if you guys would like to attend the graduation. And it is on Thursday, fifth of November, at six o'clock in the evening at the Trails, uh, payment facility in Lafayette, if, I'd like for you guys, if you guys can go, you're welcome to go, but I would just like to know, so I can let them know, because I think they do feed us afterwards, so I'm not like, what, how many people are coming with us? But it's, it's pretty nice, it says Lafayette Fire Department and the Fire Department, uh, Fire Graduation Academy, so they include us, you know, so it's pretty nice.
Greg, and Megan, if you can get your challenges, I want to get a little bit of a job done.
And then, also, I know Greg's a part, unless he won vacations, he'll be going on one of these tours anyways, but I wanted to invite you and Megan as well to go run a tour of the hospital on the 19th, 20th, and 21st of, uh, October. And I want, if you guys want to go do the walkthrough with us, you're welcome to, so we, I make them those days. Just let us know, just need us out there, not here, and it doesn't matter what day.
Thank you, I appreciate that, I really want to tour the facility, it's going to be a great access to, you know, so Greg, Megan, if you decide to come, we can meet together, meet you at their hospital.
And also, next week will be a busy week, October, they, they got the roof, she was off the roof of the house, maybe during, uh, on weather permitting, we're going to October 22nd, 23rd, then on the 24th, if, if it's not real windy, obviously if the wind blowing, uh, we will be burning it down on that day, but if it's, if it's a nice calm day, we will be burning it down on the 24th of October, and anyone's welcome, swing out by and check those training dates out, so.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions you can get with me or?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jason Forsyth, Street of Power.
Sure. Anytime you have, hold this closer. I only have one thing, I did want to let everyone know, we're getting ready for leaf, leaf season, I was hoping they'd hold off for a couple, three days, the weather we're getting right now is probably going to move that up a couple of days, so, we are ready for that, and happens, we're supposed to start today, but we didn't do much today, it's not down, so. One thing I want to bring to the board today is, I talked to the mayor over today, we have a new leaf machine, as everyone knows, and we would like, I'd like to put a, had Janay Wagner from, stay over there, that's it, graphics director, come out today, and her and I and Annie and Christina went out there, because they know all the designs and stuff, I can think of things that I need to hear about, the designs and stuff, and, um, one of the things that's been dear to me for a long time is breast cancer, and obviously now, my wife's mother-in-law, her mother has Alzheimer's prevention, that's kind of a forefront, but I know breast cancer and Alzheimer's in our community is, is huge, that people that have it, I think those are two of the most vulnerable diseases, not, not making any other disease less than one of them, but I just know that, you know, I've known a lot of people that have gone through that, cancer in general, but breast cancer is one that's closer to me, so we come out, we looked at some things, and we'd like to take one side of that leaf machine and make it as a breast cancer, a breast cancer wrap on it, uh, we're still working on the design right now, Janay will go try to get it to me by five o'clock, and see if we'll be able to do that, and so, and then the other side of the leaf machine would be a, their Alzheimer's wrap, and I think you've seen these wraps we're talking about on our trash trucks, uh, where we've had coloring contests in the past, and put the lyrics on, on trucks, we've got the website on the last two trash trucks, I think. But I just think it's kind of sets things off a little bit, and, so I kind of want to bring that to the board, I don't have a price for you, they're not expensive at all, uh, Janay does a great job, she even said that we, once we get this rolling, she would come out and even work on a forest inside the building, that way we can have it and use it, uh, by the time we're ready to use it this year, we should be able to have it on the side, so, um, if it's okay with Board of Works and Mayor, we'd like to move forward with that, I, I want to say it's probably not going to be any more than probably two hundred and fifty on each side, if that's smaller than the trash truck, and the trash truck is cheaper than that, so, uh, but I think it really stands out, and then, um, just a little bit about what we, we want to do as we move forward is, not this year, but, you know, we just don't have enough time, maybe next year, is to take it uptown a bit, or some more close uptown where everybody can see it, and then maybe try to raise some money for both organizations by allowing people to put their name, uh, on their, name on it, that they lost on the, on the side of the machine, whichever side they, they prefer, so, uh, just kind of want to bring that there, and see if we can kind of move forward on that, uh, as soon as Janay gets back, you know, obviously emailing you and maybe getting, and maybe the information on what it's going to look like, what the cost will be, I, I can't see if they will.
Jason, oh, thank you for working on that, um, I think it'd be great to show our community that we care, and as you said, it'd be probably our business in some way, a bit of that, the breast cancer, I just think it's a good topic, and I'm passionate about it, Greg and Megan as well, but as far as I'm concerned, I'm, I'm in favor of that topic.
I think it's a good cause, I think it shows, you know, our concern and community, and also the ability for people to pay back, so.
Basically, it shows our concern, the ability for people.
Yes, I agree, it's a very, I agree, it's a very caring and creative way to show that we care.
I agree, we're going to go ahead and keep this done.
Megan, while we have you here, I was going to ask you, have you heard anything in reference to the street question you had for me, as far as the police and fire do, did I hear anything more on that or?
Are you referring to the young man that was wanting to do the striping on the streets? I, I let Mayor know of the interest, but he has not proceeded further yet, he, he intends to though, but I don't have any further information.
Oh, I just want to check, since we were together. Thanks.
Thank you, Jason, it's all over.
Thank you. Jason, thank you for the, the job on Main Street.
Okay.
Uh, it looks good, or I've already got a comment about making that turn, and it's a little bit safer there, so thanks for getting on that.
I'm glad you mentioned that, I'd be willing to drive it down there today and actually look down at this, make it look nice, makes a huge difference. Yeah, I know BMW, all the lawmakers down in the world, so, thanks for your.
Next up, going to the circus, it's Don Stock.
Good evening, Lord. Just got a couple of things, I had something pop up just recently, and I'll talk to you about it, if you don't want to make a decision on tonight, that's fine, I understand. First of all, we'll go over the permit report for September 2020. We issued ninety-four permits consisting of a bedroom addition, one two-bedroom, one-two addition, six fences, three commercial remodel, like thirty-three residential remodel, like thirty roofs, three-story shares, two demolitions, five driveways, four sidewalks, four signs, two street cuts. Total valuation is about five hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred dollars, and the revenue collected for those permits total, three thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars and fourteen cents. So kind of okay, we, our code came up. I do want you to know that tonight, we'll be presenting to the council a amended version of our permit fees, we're going to make some changes, uh, the changes are as follows. You have no problems with storage buildings that aren't placed on foundations, that are not really in the fee process, if we would attach them to something else, and we wouldn't make sure that they were in a category by themselves, these twenty-five dollars, we're removing, uh, above-ground swing tools, it was causing a challenge with us, and it also said over thirty-six inches tall, so people who thought that they had a swing pool under thirty inches, or thirty-six inches, didn't have to pay for a permit, because of the fees, so we're removing the over thirty-six inches tall out of the fee, so that we can, uh, attach that to, to those thirty inch pools. We don't go, we don't make anybody do the two foots, I mean, I really, that's kind of a crazy process, but when you get three or four foots, you have the opportunity of, of something drastic happening, and so we want to be able to, to, uh, take care of those. And we're adding a demolition garage fee, that we can have one of those, something ten dollars, and we're also, maybe the biggest, the biggest changes that we're making, has to do at the industrial side of things, let's see if I can find it, there it is. We never had a industrial remodeling, and with all the remodeling going on, free to lay, go to charge them, what we would do, a thousand dollars, that was kind of crazy, so, uh, we, we decided to have industrial renovation added to five hundred dollars for the renovation, and then what we're doing is, uh, that needs to be part of the industrial, uh, permit, each structure in addition was five hundred dollars plus three, three cents per square foot, and we've adjusted that to a thousand dollars plus the three cents per square foot, so all of those are going to the board tonight to get a first reading and hopefully move forward from there, so, uh, we'll, we'll go and talk to the council members on those changes. The last thing that I have for you is, last week in one of our, our permits, we were out at Fifth Street, Taylor Park, and while we were there, there was an organization, a volunteer organization that puts in handicap ramps, and it's no cost, none of it's a cost, but, uh, they should still be permitted, so what I'm coming to you and asking you about, the organization is called SAWS, S-A-W-S, Service Network Incorporated, project manager is John Hutter, and what we said was, we would come to the board to see that if they put in these, uh, ramps, if we can just waive the fees, so they don't have to pay an additional price for the permit, but still get the permit, so we can complete block through our inspections, they've been doing them for like twelve years, nothing that's come before them, that say that they haven't done a permit or anything, and we don't want to make a penalty, extra charge, we just want to be able to make sure that they're going in properly. So I thought I would come to you, now it's not on the agenda, if you want me to bring it back, at the following council member, or Board of Works in general, I can do that, but I wanted you to be aware.
I'm going to guess they're going to want to get started on some of the things with the climate coming on, and the bed, whether it could possibly, so is this an all volunteer group inside current?
It is, it's an all volunteer, they don't charge anybody for the, for the, uh, the ramp though.
Okay, okay, so I guess you would want us to waive the fees, their timeframes, they're doing it, or just, did they say, is this something you all the time, or is this just a project?
He said he's been doing it for like twelve years, I don't know if that means here in town, but, um, I know that we were there, uh, looking on a, uh, trailer, just to be, uh, sound a bit, they put one in there without any type of permitting process, it's all definitely, all we want to do is just be able to make sure that it's done right, without pausing, and exit fee, now if you want to do this on a, a yearly process, I'll be happy to bring it back on a yearly basis, if you want to, you know, just let things go as if now, uh, where we, we don't, you know, do the permitting process or just let it go, what we're just, what we're just trying to do is keep track of, of what's going in and how it went in.
So they would, who had it permitted, and why would it permit it, just, uh, be, and?
No, no charge.
Okay.
That way, that way we can keep, if you want to make sure that what they're doing is proper, and, uh, I, I didn't want to charge a fee for being tied up, they're all volunteers, appreciative basically.
Greg or Megan, do you have anything concerning this, or any thoughts?
No, I would agree with Don, I think that's, I think it's a good project, and. And I think my own personal opinion would be that we could finish out this year. I think I would like to see it go year to year so that you can see how that process works and the changes you want to make to that. And then other than that, it just falls the same procedures. I agree, you will follow up with it like you would throwing your construction. I think that's a win for us.
Megan, did you have any thoughts on that?
I just have a quick question from my understanding. So as I heard, it's a voluntary organization. They don't charge anything, but let's say a residential or a resident wanted to put one in their home themselves. They would be able to pay for the permit to make that adjustment to their own property. Is that correct?
That would be problematic. I would ask if they're going to do this, then you would just give it to the name of the organization, Service at Work, SAWs. And I would think it would just be to that organization. If another professional organization comes up that does these also, I'd be happy to bring them back. But everybody else, they can pay for the fees.
Okay, I like the fact of us being able to waive that. But since it's such a necessary piece for certain people's everyday life. And again, this is difficult being virtual and hearing everything properly. But you're saying they could contact the organization that will waive the, have the permit fee waived and have that installed?
No, if that's what we need to do, then we have all the information now, we'd be happy to do that for the influence.
Okay. For the group, yes, I'd like to also be able to consider extending that grace to people in need that have the same, that have the same need.
If you've done, there'd be something that would be due.
I guess I didn't quite hear.
Okay, I think she said in addition to this group, any others that would have a need?
Yeah, I would make it that it would be a not-for-profit group that's doing it and not a for-profit. So I'm sure that if I'm sitting here thinking, there's probably some type of regulations for them to put this whole ramp in at no cost. There's probably some type of financial process that they look at before they do it. But the fact that if any, there may be another one, a customer who does the same thing, that if they do, we catch the label, we have to bring them back to you to get their permission. But I'm not for sure if this is the same organization. I actually just went out to 31% of town shit goes out in the other mobile home park. And went out for a couple of times and the people were good fun there to show that. I don't know if it's that organization or not. I hope we did that. John said that they've been doing it for like 12 years, this organization has. And I just didn't make a point to do something for the volunteer.
I'm in favor.
What'd she say?
She's in favor.
Okay, okay. Should we make a motion probably to that? I think we should for the minutes.
I'll make, I'll make the motion that we approve this organization at the permit fee waived for this permit.
Yes, sir.
Local please, Carol. Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Megan and Sheets.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Don. Next up, Barbara, any other projects to form in?
Good evening. I just have a couple of things for you guys. One is a quick update on the potential dog park. So we did acquire the fencing from Humane Society. They left out, we're estimating a little over 100 feet, or I'm sorry, 1,000 feet of fencing. And so that's a really good start. We have also, I spoke to Nancy and she mentioned that one of the things they applied for this past year was a grant through an SIA. And she basically gave me the one to go that, to go there and we started that process today. So we would be applying for a grant through them to help the enjoy items with the dog park. We would be requesting $15,000 grants now. So the deadline is January 1st, so that's, I'll be giving you guys updates on the next couple of months.
Thank you for working on that. I think it's really important for the city. I know that we've got a lot of citizens that are registered in a dog park. So I appreciate you checking into that and I think we just need to keep moving forward on it.
Sounds great. So we are decorating for Christmas now, so we've got one of the small tunnels done. We'll be starting the large tunnel tomorrow. We have lots of different areas we're going to be putting coves up throughout TPA. So people have already noticed we're kind of re-routing the draft park. But our whole goal is to be done before December. So we don't want to be still doing anything in December, so that's why we're starting now.
Do you know when you're going to plan to have the lights on? It's still going to be?
We're going to try to purchase the day after Thanksgiving. And I think we can do that.
Okay.
The last thing we'll be doing is I'm going to be giving you guys quotes for a new trailer. We've been basically, we got the new mowers and they do fit our old trailer however, it's really tight squeeze. And I know that that's just going to provide damage out more plenty to the trailer or the mowers if we keep using that type of trailer. So I'll give you guys quotes for a new trailer, but what I would like to do is spend the rest of the money on our utility vehicle fund, which is $8,350. We would just like to use that to get a trailer that will be used next year for the mowers. And also it'll be one that we can also hold the tractor or walk at if we were to do that. So we use it for pretty much everything. And we would be trading in one of the trailers that we currently have.
Did you see the cost on that?
There's no cost yet, I'll get you guys quotes.
Okay.
What we have is, we have $8,000 and a half, which it will be.
Okay, but then to go ahead and get those quotes and then get it back to us so we can make a decision. Megan, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have for you guys.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Next up is Annie Bacon, the Development Director.
I just have one item for you tonight. You should have had in your packets the translator independent contractor agreement. We're trying to expand and improve communication offerings the city provides for our community. And one of those ways is by making sure that our social media and website posts are viable. So we've averaged out to someone who is interested in providing services for us. And I'd like you to approve the contract that we would like to use the purposes of hiring someone to translate documents for us. I think it's very important for this being community that we get this done. I think it's important that they are able to read those announcements as well or other things that we put out. I think you mentioned something about for the parks, there's have to be applications for like the shelters or something like this. So I think it's something that's really important that we do this to try to reach out to our community.
Annie, I just have a question with the contract under independent contractor status number two. It says unless otherwise expressly set forth within the city will not supervise direct or counsel contractor in a manner or method before meeting a sign. Is that, is that, who would be transferred there? We report to?
Essentially, this is saying that we're not going to supervise them while they translate.
Okay.
Is my understanding, is that correct for us? So basically, when I ask for a translation, I will give a deadline to get it back. And the method they translate or where, how they do that, I won't supervise it.
Okay.
Megan, did you have anything on that for us?
I don't have any questions. I think it's very well prepared and very necessary. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the translator contractor agreement.
Local please, Carol. Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Megan and Sheets.
Aye.
Thank you, that's all I have for you. Thank you, Annie, for all your work on it. Next up, do you have anyone for Human Resources or do you have anything for us, Carol?
No, we have United Way discussion on, I'm not sure if you wanted to come back on that tonight or if you want to.
I think that we, I think we need to probably act on it because I think it's something that needs to be put into effect. They gives their fair share, which is one hour a month. And then that will be taken out, I mean, seven days, but they would be given a day off throughout that year. Was that your understanding as well, Megan and Greg?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, did we go ahead and make a motion and pass that tonight if you're prepared to do that?
I'd like a motion that we allow the program of one hour's pay per month is the level of giving for United Way to be able to have an additional day off per year for a city employee.
I will second that, Megan.
Local please, Carol. Mayor Sheets.
Aye.
Greg Miller.
Aye.
Megan and Sheets.
Aye.
Carol, can you do a big draw then and let us know that that did get approved? And we'll be getting information out to all the department heads as to how that's going to work. And I'm still thinking that I think might be a invite to your departments if you would like going to, to discuss this as far as United Way and what they do and how much they appreciate those contributions. Next on our agenda is the attorney, Wes Bergman.
I will be more briefly telling those. This furnace money, it's, we're down paying it, it's going to be paid in the title of the shared services. I will take some many in tax, but the interest form.
Okay.
Before that, I have an interest in that agency.
Okay.
And then did I, from my correct understanding, Carol, there was not, that came in, that was longer?
There were actually two more.
Two more? Are they here tonight?
I did not, I sent them both to Patty.
But they, they, they can open their head. You know?
They were remaining and popping to.
Okay. So we have two additional beds. I don't know how much they were for, I haven't seen that. But we'll have to re-notify them, just keep going back and forth. But that's a good thing.
At what point do you stop?
No, I think maybe it's within 10 days to 2 days to re-apply.
Okay.
So hopefully that will be a large enough improvement that it won't be long too much longer. The other thing I had is that the city and the county have both received from NDOT that offered to purchase a portion of the real estate right away here on the corner of 39th and 28th. Right at the Ivy Tech apartment there. Some of that corner is going to come off. There's going to be a temporary easement for a portion. Doesn't look likely scope of work includes loss of any parking spaces. So there's a lot of landscaping there, it's been very nicely done in monuments and signs, all of which are referred to in this offer as possible to cure. And they've wrote it down in three things, although I think in the charter letter they've, they've mischaracterized two of them, they've switched them. It was the $1,000. And then the amount paid for the fee acquisition is $36,205. And the embersment of work is $4,465. So that totals $76,200. Half of which would go to the county, the NPA. Half of which would go to the county and after the city, those, those kind of things. Another item I have interest in the property. Ivy Tech is the one that I understand that erected or constructed the improvements on that and so far as the signage is concerned and the flag pole and the monuments and the landscaping. So we'll have to resolve this issue with Ivy Tech too, it seems to me. Although that's on the city and county ground. I have a speculative copy since fairly likely this offer to the mayor and to the Board of Works members to review. There will be in that packet. I just got this this morning because I didn't return until yesterday. It apparently came in the office Friday, I think the 9th. So the charter letter will say that you have 30 days to do something on this or accept or reject it. Then if we accept it, then they, within several weeks, pay money into the clerk of work and they can be drawn down if it's not accepted. Then they can take the ground anyway. But if there's a dispute as to the valuation of the payment, we can raise that in the proceeding and actually have a jury trial to determine that the city and the county have their own crazers. Look at the thing. For the Board of Works members and the mayor, it is included in that packet about two years in the way back. And I just looked at it as the city here, a proposal from a now big called the Sign Group in Indianapolis that breaks down how they arrive, that they cost the tour. And also as they spoke with work, as I read it very quickly as to what they would be doing. So that needs to be reviewed. And then I will call or email the gentleman over in Lafayette, Ivy Tech. It needs to be involved in this. There, when I skimmed through this offer to purchase here in the city, I didn't see the overlay, the cover area of the overlay, the variation that would be affected in this packet. But it was in that email, taken out about 10 days ago. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay, and that's very helpful to see that. So maybe we can forward that to the other Board of Works members. So anyway, this is something that needs to be addressed. I think I've covered about everything I can at this point. And that's all I had there.
So Wes, if I was correct, what I heard of the county, like the big sign that was donated by the county, they are going to take that down and store it and come back and put it back. How is that?
Or the next, the next door, the brick sign.
Oh.
So that's going to have to be come down and be reconstructed. But this proposal from the Sign Company, I think I want to hear.
So they're saying that's going to cover the cost of doing that?
Yeah, because they would store these things and then reinstall them, including the flag pole and the signs and those things. Provide labor excavation, concrete, negative bolts, et cetera, to reinstall two parking lot lights. Also, bollards with steel cage in between. Provide labor and materials to build a new brick wall, excavation concrete, brick and limestone pad. We will repaint letters and install them on a new wall, install the existing found fixtures. Who is the architect or firm that signed that? Many in Indianapolis.
I can't read them.
Surrounding day.
Yes.
And they did really a fantastic job given the elevation concerns that there are that are tweaking very weak in that corner. But as far as reconstructing that brick sign, we're trying to find a place to do it. Because it's the issue, I think the may have to be some buildup someplace.
So since that was by donations and it's actually Ivy Tech.
Yeah, it was the donations were to Ivy Tech, I believe, and then Ivy Tech constructed the improvements.
Okay, so who would make that decision? I mean, can we make?
The county and the city and Ivy Tech.
We can all make that decision. So probably at this point, we don't want to make any decision on this tonight. I believe the county's already passed this. So probably at this point, we don't want to make any decision on this, and I believe the county's already passed this, correct?
Yeah, I was surprised.
At the last commission, yeah, last commissioners meeting the county had. Um, I would like for the board of works myself, I need to review that as well before we make a decision, if that's okay with you. Greg and Megan?
And Ivy Tech, they may want to get their own uh, proposals for the reconstruction. And uh, other work that each.
And Jason, what is, is it only to be there doing that intersection?
What's that, Derek?
When are you gonna be doing that intersection, do you think?
I don't know, I mean, it's probably, I think, we should probably need a while, but we just have that, probably April.
Uh, next year, okay, so we have.
I understand everything's supposed to start.
And, and they could probably, they'll be on very, they should not be noticing that, they're not gonna hold up the project.
Okay, next on the agenda is unfinished business. And it's not on the agenda, but I would like to bring up that all the insurance rates. Uh, the insurance committee that, I think we met Megan last week, one day, it was Tuesday. And uh, Megan was in that meeting.
Right, now.
The public people not being able to get that healthcare that maybe they normally would do. But we're doing really well this year, and they're competing that for next year, we won't have to have any increases or the premiums as far as what the city pays. So during that discussion, uh, we decided that we're also not gonna raise the employees' portion. You know, in the past, every year, we'd feel it, do we want to raise it or whatever? So this year, there will be no raise to the employees' uh, contribution to the health insurance premiums, if this passes. Uh, if one of you would want to make that motion, if you're in agreement with that? Want to move that uh, we honor that, that there is no raise, we remain static at the current levels and the current rates?
I see.
Roll call please, Carol. Mayor Sheets?
Aye.
Greg Miller?
Aye.
Megan Sheets?
I, I'd like to also make the uh, comment that it's rather unprecedented that this occurs. And uh, I think it's, it's remarkable that we can maintain that, and they can honor their full two percent increase. So I think um, I'm happy the city can do that for employees this year.
Yes, and I think that speaks out for our employees, and I appreciate all that they do. We have the pre-planning, and I think we're getting more usage out of that pre-planning, which in turn helps our insurance premiums. And then I think, uh, also we're more cautious now about, you know, whether going emergency room or face time things. So I, I say to the employees, keep up the good work, and me and I appreciate everybody's effort, so it's keeping the health insurance premiums down. Next on the agenda is new business, does anybody have anything for us tonight? Yeah? We may have just one more thing here, it's uh, actually, the utility service board at their last meeting, uh, passed, isn't it a agreement? A memorandum that the property out on um, Williams Road, there's behind those houses, but they have turned that over back to the city, they don't want it anymore. So what do we need to do less as far as moving?
The city, we have three sports, we don't have a sale, the city.
Okay.
Probably go back.
Okay, okay. Uh, Greg and Megan, are you okay with that, is that lane back behind the houses to the east? Do you, do you know?
Yes.
Use that, the water pump house up there?
There's also.
Yes, there's farm ground around it, uh, but they've taken down the pump house, and they don't use it at all. So right now, the leading street department, is that correct, Jason?
Yes.
Is keeping that up. Um, I mean, I can't really think of anything right now, I don't think the city would want to use that more. Um, like Wes said, we could go ahead and advertise it, and maybe get, you know, some people interested in purchasing that. I know I had people ask me about it, so what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think, you know, by going out there looking at it, it looks like they don't ease it as it joins that driveway to get back to it, which is where it didn't look like there's any other way for eastern to back to. Wes said there's more ground on the sides of that, so I think that's a good choice.
So it'd probably be somebody interested, either the farm ground or the properties around there that, that back in their houses, further the outside right here. Uh, what happens as far as the easement then?
I'd like to see how the easement is for us, but it's probably more, um, okay.
It can, okay. Okay, so uh, if you want to, Wes, keep going forward then, and uh, try to see if we can sell this property then. Did anyone else have anything this evening? Carol, do you have anything for us? Take a motion to adjourn.
Done.
Thank you, thanks for coming this evening.